The regular meeting of the Mishawaka Common Council for Monday, July 26, 2021, will please come to order. For those of you who are in attendance this evening, welcome. If you would take a moment and check your cellphone, please, to make sure that it is on silent or vibrate. And we would appreciate that. For those of you who are participating remotely, we are once again providing a live stream of this evening's meeting. And to that end, members of the public are asked to place their microphone on mute during the meeting with the exception of any public hearing. At the appropriate point in the meeting, I will invite the public to unmute their microphone for purposes of submitting such comments as they wish to make, one person at a time. All persons wishing to make public comments will be asked to first state their name and address for the record. And after completing the comment, members of the public will once again be asked to place their microphone on mute. And we thank all of you, whether you are here virtually or in person, for your cooperation. And with that, please join us in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Here.
Mr. Benicki?
Here.
Mr. Hazen?
Here.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Here.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Here.
Mr. Compton?
Here.
Mrs. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Here.
Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of July 6, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none of the minutes will stand approved as received from the Clerk's office. Petitions, communications, remonstrance, and memorial.
Yes, Mr. President, we have a letter from the Board of Zoning Appeals regarding their recommendations from their July 13, 2021, meeting. Honorable members, a regular meeting of the Mishawaka Board of Zoning Appeals was held on the above-referenced date, at which time the following use variance was considered: Appeal Number 2021-20, an appeal submitted by Jada LLC requesting a use variance for 1035 East McKinley Avenue to allow for continuation of automobile repair in I-1 Light Industrial District. The Board with a vote of 5 to 0 recommended approval, subject to the following condition: Installation of a grid oil-water separator if anywhere containing fluids, such as brake jobs or oil changes, occur at this site in the future. This signed by Kerry Myers, administrative planner. I also have the presentation of encumbered funds from the controller. Due to contracts not complete or invoices not paid in the year in which they were budgeted, these earmarked dollars move forward to the next year's budget. Most are capital-related and contractual, as detailed in the attached report. Please contact me with any questions. And this is from Becky Miller.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council with regard to the presentation of encumbered funds? Then, hearing none, the record will reflect that we've received that information. Thank you. This evening, we have no report of any special committee, so we'll move into ordinances on first reading.
Proposed ordinance number 2021-24, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, authorizing the investment of public funds pursuant to Indiana Code 5-13-9-5.
Proposed ordinance number 2021-24 will be assigned to the Budget and Finance Committee. Resolutions?
Resolution R. 2021-14, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, introducing an ordinance for annexation, adopting a written fiscal plan, and a definite policy for annexation for the property located at a 20-acre parcel located north of Autumn Ridge subdivision and south of Blair Hills subdivision.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on proposed Resolution 2021-14. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, Ken Prince, City Planner. Before you is an annexation for roughly 20 acres. The property itself is located between Autumn Ridge and the Blair Hills subdivision. Actually, in the development of the Autumn Ridge subdivision, stub streets and utility connections were identified to provide access to this parcel. So this will be an extension of Autumn Ridge as it is developed. So of the 19.9 acres, 83% is contingent to the city. As required by the Indiana Code, you've got the fiscal plan before you. This is a cookie-cutter template for properties this small. We don't go through a great due diligence process. We distribute it to every department and identify if there are any capital expenditures needed. All departments have indicated that no additional capital expenditures are required of the city to service the property, which means that the property and the development would be serviced out of the existing annual budgets for each department. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Prince? Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If so, would you please come forward to the podium? Then, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If you would, please unmute your microphone. Is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Please come forward. Then, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yep.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed resolution passes 9 to 0. Resolution Number R. 2021-15, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, introducing an ordinance for annexation, adopting a written fiscal plan, and a definite policy for annexation for the property located at 16996 State Road 23, South Bend, Indiana, including the adjacent State Road 23 Public Right-of-Way and a vacant parcel to the south.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on proposed Resolution 2021-15. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, Ken Prince, City Planner. The size of this property is 5.2 acres roughly, and it's 29.1% contiguous to the existing city limits. It is only contiguous from the condominium development located off of Douglas Road, and the access to the property is only off State Road 23. The developer, in this case, contacted the city for annexation because they're looking to develop the property in self-lock storage units. Ultimately, the self-lock storage is a good idea for the property because really there's difficulty in getting sewer to the property without going through the existing condominium development, which the developer is looking at. But ultimately, self-lock storage is something that actually can exist without... If they don't have a bathroom, they don't need the sewer to be there, so it's a good fit for the difficulties associated with the property. They contacted the city of Mishawaka because it straddles more the Mishawaka side, if you will, than the South Bend side. This is right at our limit. Hickory Road is generally considered the... Hickory Road Extended would be considered the natural limits between our two cities. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Prince? Mr. Emmons?
Just a question. You said there'd be no facilities there. They have an office, don't they have to have facilities?
If they have an office, yes, they would have to have facilities there. And I believe the developer is... I believe a representative is here this evening, but I believe they're still looking at that , Woody. So the lift station that is serving the existing condominium development is a private lift station. So they have to literally contact that development where they have the right to hook up to it. And I think if they can, they will have an office. If they can't, then they wouldn't have an office, is how they're approaching it.
Okay, but if they have an office, they have to have it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Prince? Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If you would, please come forward.
Hi, good evening. Mike Huber, Abema March Consultants, 315 West Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend. I'm representing the developer for the project. He's also in the presence in the audience this evening. Just to kind of address your concerns, we understand we are currently negotiating with the property to the south to try to get access to the sewer that's down there to be able to develop the office. The developer has also said if there's no way we can get access to that or any other way to provide any subject facilities to the office, we will develop it without the office until at some point when facilities for sanitary sewer would become available. So that's the plan. Now, I have to answer any other questions you might have, too.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Huber?
Oh, just... No, thank you. Even if you don't have the facilities, would you have running water there?
Yeah, I think we have water that's available at the property, so I think there'd be water, but we won't have need for sanitary sewer if we don't... if we won't have access to it, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Huber?
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If so, please come forward. Seeing no one, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? Then, is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? If so, please come forward. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed resolution passes 9 to 0. Resolution R. 2021-16, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, adding parcels to the city's property acquisition list associated with a previously approved Common Council Resolution 2014-07, which approved in order of the City of Mishawaka Plan Commission approving a certain declaratory resolution, an amendment to the boundaries of Northwest Area Improvement Project, consolidation of the South Side Economic Development Area, and the Northwest Improvement Project into one consolidated area improvement project, and an amendment to the Economic Development Plan for the Consolidated Area Improvement Project adopted by the City of Mishawaka Redevelopment Commission.
We will now open the public hearing on proposed Resolution 2021-16. Anyone physically present who wishes to speak in favor, please come forward.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, Ken Prince, City Planner. To paraphrase or reinterpret what Clerk Block just said, this is adding a property to the acquisition list. Back in 2014, when we amended the Tiff District and created one consolidated Tiff District, we are required to put properties that we were looking to acquire as part of that amendment to the Tiff District, rather than do it at that time, knowing that as road improvements and as park improvements and as miscellaneous light properties come available, there is no way to do a complete list. We have to add them after the facts. And the decision was made at that time to add these parcels individually. And tonight, we're here to ask you to add 901 South Union Street. This is formerly Dorbin's, now Love's. A fire took place at this location. Once that fire took place, we contacted the owner with an interest in purchasing. The property is located directly on the sidewalk. If you've been by it, you can see the odd, even where they load in the door. It's got a bump that's not handicap compliant, adjacent along that public sidewalk. Rather than see somebody look to reinvest in that property, the city wanted to acquire it. Ultimately, we believe as part of any kind of road widening or sidewalk improvement, we're going to need to remove that building. We'd much rather do it now before somebody reinvests in the property and have to acquire it later. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. And Mr. Emmons?
Thank you. Mr. Prince, once you purchase that facility, are you going to demolish it, or is it just going to be left standing there?
We typically do not leave things standing for any extended period of time unless we have to do. I'll use the medical office on Mishawaka Avenue. We've been involved in getting some of the medical fluids out of there and the like. So if there's environmental remediation, this property could stay up for a year. If public safety wants to train in the facility, we would work with them to train in it, but in terms of long-term, no, we have no plans in keeping that in place.
Yeah, because it's kind of an eyesore with it being burnt and everything on the inside and everything.
We agree. Yeah.
Also, just down the street, that little construction company building that the city has purchased, is that...
We have not purchased it yet.
Oh, you haven't purchased that yet?
So, as an update, that is a different matter, but just as an update because you brought it up. There is a bank issue associated with that property, so the soonest we are likely to acquire that would be next year. So essentially, we haven't executed yet because of that issue. There's an outstanding lien on the property that has to be addressed. So until that is addressed, there is no way for the city to acquire it. We have inquired about potentially leasing it so we can knock it down and take over the maintenance of the property because that's been an issue, but that's something that we continue to work on, and that's all I can report right now.
Okay. With my understanding, that the city had already purchased that...
No, we did receive permission from both the Redevelopment Commission and the council to acquire the property. We have not closed on it because of that issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emmons.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Prince, that property, you said there was a fire. Now, generally, people have insurance, so insurance should have either paid to fix it, or insurance should have paid to tear it down. I mean, why is the city assuming the responsibility to tear it down if, in fact, it's a fire hazard or going to fall down anyway? Shouldn't that be on the seller?
So, in terms of... I believe, and we are not involved, we are a third party to any kind of insurance that was on the building, and I'm sure there was insurance on it, but if you can imagine, they've reached a point where they could take that insurance money and reinvest into the structure, or the city could buy it because we know we need it over time and tear it down. We could never get it cheaper because of the insurance money that they were getting for the property that they are using to... And I know there was a... The property was being purchased on contract, so even in terms of putting the purchase agreement together, we had to meet with multiple parties to get that property signed, if you will, so we could potentially buy it. So we believe that the money... The Redevelopment Commission has approved $100,000 for the acquisition of the property, and we think if someone were to reinvest in it, that would have been way, way higher in terms of taking an active market out as a result of it. So, yes, the insurance payment, I believe, contributed to it, but actually contributed to the benefit of the city for getting it at a lower price. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Prince?
If I may, Mr. President?
No, you can't. No, go ahead.
That's fine. I would note, Mr. Benicki, by law, we have to get two appraisals of the property, and the property appraised for just over $100,000. So it's not... We do believe that that's fair market value for, even though the property's been burned, that we are getting it for fair market value.
And I can appreciate, but I would think that, you know, if the vacant lot was worth $50,000 and we have to tear down the building, I mean, that should be...
So the issue is that the fire didn't completely... It damaged it to a point where it's going to be very expensive to repair it, but it didn't remove all value, and that's the crux that we're sitting in.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Prince? Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If you would, please come forward. Seeing no one, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? Then, is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes 9 to 0. Resolution R. 2020... I'm sorry. Resolution R. 2021-17, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, authorizing the City of Mishawaka Redevelopment Commission to sell municipally-owned property in accordance with the City of Mishawaka Municipal Code, Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 3, Section 2-492 and 493.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on proposed Resolution 2021-17. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. You are getting your steps in this evening, Mr. Prince.
It's not far. I probably need it. Mr. President, Members of the Council, Ken Prince, City Planner. I want to thank Clerk Block. When we... We don't normally dispose of what I'll call civil city property very often, and so when we're looking at the consolidation of the Mishawaka Utilities Business Office, City Hall, and the police station, it was brought to our attention that that very specifically requires council approval. We had Mr. Hinkle do a code review, and in the Indiana Code, there is no such requirement, but in our municipal code, there is, in fact, a requirement to come before the council and ask for your permission. So we're happy to do so. As has been well published and as it's been distributed to you previously, the City Redevelopment Commission solicited bids as required by law for the disposal of our Mishawaka Utilities Business Office at 126 North Church Street. We did, based on the offer sheet that was put together that had very specific requirements of meeting our design review ordinance downtown and looking for a significant project, we had one bidder, and that was Beacon Health Systems, Inc. As, again, has been widely publicized, Beacon is looking to do an office, a medical office building. The first phase is $12.5 million, and that would proceed immediately or is proceeding immediately. And the second phase is another $8.5 million addition that would go on to where the Mishawaka Utilities Business Office is located. We feel like the project itself would be a wonderful addition and a great investment in our city, and we're just asking at this point in time for your permission to dispose of the property in that regard, and I'm happy to ask any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Prince?
Mr. Prince, going back to a little bit of the dialogue that you had with Mr. Benicki on the prior resolution, can you talk a little bit more fully, or perhaps if somebody else is going to speak into this, we can defer to them, but can you talk a little bit about the investment that's going to be made in downtown Mishawaka as a result of the disposition of this property? How that benefits the community, and then how that matches up to the purchase price that's being paid for the acquisition of the property?
Correct. So the purchase price of the property is only $50,000, and we had it appraised, and I... Sorry, I've got too many numbers in my head, but it's... It came in at hundreds of thousands of dollars. I forget if it was 200 and some or 300, but in that range, it was a few hundred thousand dollars. And so if you can imagine, if I am an investor and I own that building, I would not use the financial model of the city. I would sell it to somebody for that $300,000, and they in turn would invest in it. We do not follow that model. So if you can imagine, if I were in that scenario and I owned the property, I sell the building, somebody comes in and then essentially they spent $300,000 on this facility. Forgive me for saying this, but they're going to put some paint on it, put some lipstick on it, and then they're going to re-market the property. But what we're looking for is a transformative investment in the city. We have a much longer-term look when we look at the investment in property. So rather than, let's say if they bought it for $300,000, they could put a half-million dollars into it, and then they can lease it for X amount of value. That's the model that the market would be looking at for this building. In Beacon's case, they're looking at it as a teardown, which is why they are looking at only $50,000 for the property. In fact, if you recall, when we talked about this briefly on another occasion, we have earmarked in our budget right now in Tiff a line item for the removal of the Mishawaka Utilities Business Office that we now no longer have to carry if this sale goes through to Beacon, because they are going to take on that liability of not only knocking down the structure, but we believe asbestos is involved, lead paint is involved, and all the things that we normally have to deal with are now being taken over by Beacon Health Systems and the acquisition of the property. So that in and of itself, and again, looking at the investment, the building located on the corner, again, they're looking at it as location, location. So this is the perfect... Very much like we looked at City Hall, they're looking at this location to service downtown Mishawaka with an additional health service. So that investment in and of itself in providing that service, we believe is a benefit for all downtown Mishawaka with the services that are being provided. In addition to that, we're talking about 60 full-time employees that would be employed at this location, and that would be buying lunch at the local, that would be potentially picking up a prescription up at CVS, and really contributes to the vibrancy of the downtown. So when we talk about long-term investments, those are the types of investments that we're talking about. The other thing I have to bring up is the construction dollars. Those construction dollars are real, and when you're talking about a $20 million investment versus, again, if somebody were to straight-up buy the Mishawaka Utilities Business Office, you're talking about an investment that would be less than 10% if we just sold the building outright for an adaptive reuse. That's an estimate on my part, but you get the idea regarding the logic behind doing what we're doing in selling the property. So that's the short version, but I'm happy to go longer if you'd like me to, Mr. President.
That's very well done. And you hit on the high points that I would imagine that you hit on. I'm sure you can understand, from time to time, we hear, I suspect you hear, from members of the public who, without having the ability to always interact with you, have heard the entire narrative with regard to the long-term gain that the community will accrue for what appears to be, you know, less than a market value sale. But so, just to kind of dot the i's and cross the t's, that philosophically, you and the administration believe that the long-term gains to be made, both in terms of investment in the property, in the short term in construction, long-term, there would be increased tax revenue that we would enjoy. The additional workforce that comes into downtown, then treats in the restaurants and the stores throughout the existing downtown, and if I understood the development agreement correctly, there also will be some ongoing public access to the parking, so there'll be a shared partnership with Beacon moving forward, so that there will be public good that will come out of it in that fashion as well. Is that an accurate recitation of...
That is correct, and I'll even add to that is, when we were walking the site with Beacon when they were investigating it, they pointed at the Mill Project, and they basically said, "Well, the impetus for us doing that was in part looking at that additional population and that modern development over there, and we think that has a compounding effect." So in terms of adding value to the downtown, it's not just that basic improvement, it's that scope of improvement that is such a larger gain that people will look at it and say, "I want to be here, too." That's what we're looking for.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Mamalanti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Prince. Couple questions. You had mentioned 60 new employees that would be working at that location. Do you know if those were new hires or transfers from other locations?
We did not inquire, Mr. Mamalanti.
Okay. And then just...
This is a little different than tax abatement.
Sure.
So tax abatement, we give them the third degree, if you will.
Right. I was just curious.
We did not do that as part of the development agreement.
Sure. And then you had mentioned that there was only one bidder on this property, correct?
Correct.
That was Beacon. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Benicki?
Thank you. The only question I have is, are they a tax-paying entity? So will they be paying property taxes on that property?
They do, but within negotiated because of the, I don't want to call it public nature, but the, almost the not-for-profit nature, they pay a reduced rate, and I do not know that rate off the top of my head.
But we'll get something.
Some, correct.
I mean, it's not like we won't collect anything off that.
That is correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Prince? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If so, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed Is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Please come forward. And then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Are there any council members who wish to speak?
I would just add, thank you for your work on this. Thank you for your detailed explanation to my question off the cuff. I appreciate it, and welcome, Beacon, to downtown Mishawaka.
With that, if there are any other questions or comments, then I will call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes 9-0. Resolution R 2021-18, a resolution, the common council of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana, approving a petition of the Mishawaka Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 1035 East McKinley Avenue in Mishawaka, Indiana. This is renewal of a use variance to allow automobile repair in I-1 light industrial.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on proposed resolution 2021-18. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If you would, please come forward to the podium and begin by stating your name and address for the record.
Hello.
Good evening.
I'm Jerry D. Turk, the member of the property, of Jada LLC that owns the property at 1035 East McKinley. And I brought my wife Darlene, because I have trouble hearing if she has to answer a question. Last year, this, at this time, we applied for a temporary variance. We applied for a variance, they gave us a temporary variance, and we met all the criteria. We'd like to approve for a permanent variance for the installation of the tires and the wheels at this business. $400 every time we come in, plus $100 in postage each end of the profit.
Is there anything else that you'd like to share with us before I throw the floor open to questions from my colleagues?
Well, this is our second trip up here. We came last week, and we almost got arrested.
Yeah. We came in the building, and the building was open.
The cops surrounded us. You guys could have made television.
We appreciate you being here today.
Well, we appreciate your diligence and visiting a couple of times. One of the officers you ran into was my brother who called me when you were here, so. And he said you were very understanding, and we appreciate your cooperation as we move to the hearing, so thank you. And with that, I will throw the floor open to questions from the council. Mr. Benicki.
Everything seems like it's going very well there. The only concern I have is the stacking of tires and rims right against the road. Seems like that's been going on for the full year. Is that something that'll be moved?
Yes. Our renter is here.
Okay.
So, you want to answer that for them, please?
Why don't we, folks, if we can, let's, let's finish with questions for you, and then that gentleman's welcome to come up to the podium afterwards.
He did move them, but okay. So, what?
Well, I just want to make sure they're not coming back tomorrow.
Sure.
Because they, they were out by the sign today, and they should be against the building.
Oh, okay.
Because I don't think you can have them just kind of out and about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benicki. Other questions from the council? Mr. Emmons.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've heard from a fellow councilman, Mr. Compton, that the business is proceeding, you're abiding by all the stipulations that was put on the variance, and that, and I appreciate that. But I'm also concerned about giving a lifetime permission. To me, we ought, on a variance in that, we should have a time limit of, say, five years where you have to come back, so that if, if you're not following the guidelines and that, that we have some kind of grip on it.
Sure.
If we go ahead and give it lifetime, and I've gone through the experience where it took 12 years to get a situation under control, and I don't want to go through that again.
Right.
I don't want to penalize your partner or whatever in that, but I think the city and its council needs to have some type of leverage down the road if they're not abiding by the guidelines of the variance.
Yeah, those parameters sound, sound good. It's better than every year coming up here.
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, I have no problem of extending it to a five-year period like that, instead so that you don't have to come back, but it also gives us some leverage if you're not abiding by the guidelines that were set forth.
Yes, that's acceptable. That's, that's good.
And might I say that we're not above evicting?
Pardon?
We're not above evicting. Because we want to stay and good with the same.
Yeah. Well, it also gives us a little power on that.
Sure.
I mean, if we're notified if something's not right
We'll be out.
With the council, you let us know, it'll, it'll be remedied.
Yeah. But I'm just saying, it just gives everybody a little protection, and lets, lets you have it for a five-year period where you're not coming back every year and that. So, that would be my proposal, that we adopt that instead of just passing it for a lifetime and that.
Yeah, that's acceptable.
If we can do that, I'm in favor of it. If not, I'm not in favor of extending it for lifetime. So, I will be making a motion on that later on.
Thank you. Other questions or comments for the petitioners? Thank you, folks. Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If so, please come forward to the podium. Seeing no one, then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? Is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Are there any council members who wish to speak? Mr. Benicki.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Prince, I just have a question about the stacking of the tires. Previously, they were by the street, and I see today I drove by, and they were underneath their sign. I mean, is that acceptable, or do they got to be right against the building? I mean, we, we've had these discussions on other convenience stores and things like that.
Typically, how we look at it, I would call this, and I hate to use this term because it's a tire, but a seasonal display. So, when somebody wants to display something, I look at like a shoe store that puts a rack outside in front of their building. That's how we look at regulating this. So, what we ask is that it meets the building setback for whatever district it would be in. So, in that case, I believe the sign is right out by the road, that it shouldn't be that in that location, it should be by the building. We thought we had effectively communicated that when we met on-site. Apparently not, and we will work on that.
So, in reality, if it's just right kind of against the building
They're good.
Would be fine, and, and I think that would be fine. It's just, we just got to make sure everybody's on the same page on this, so.
We agree.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. Are there any other questions for Mr. Prince before we let him sit down momentarily? Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Mr. Emmons?
Mr. President.
I'm sorry. Mr. Compton?
Mr. President, I, this is a small business that moved into our district, and rightfully so. We asked them to abide by a variance for one year. We were cautious, wanted to see how it went, and in my opinion, they've done everything that we've asked them to do. They would, said they would display tires and rims on the road along, out in front of their business. I'm not sure if we really defined what that meant, so now that is defined of what that is. But I, I see no reason that we not grant this to them. If they are not in compliance, then we have avenues to remedy that. Unfortunately, for, for, for someone who doesn't want it remedied, it can be difficult. But, you know, I don't know, in, in my time on the council, if we've had these kinds of trouble with people. And, and, and I think that they have done what we've asked, and we should grant, grant their wish tonight. That's my, that's, I am going to be voting in favor of this ordinance, or this resolution, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Mr. Mamalenti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Compton, for sharing your thoughts with this business being in your, your district. And I specifically remember these folks presenting to us before, and I remember we gave them a pretty hard time and asked several questions, and we took them for their word, and from what I'm hearing, you've done everything to keep your word and your hard work and your honesty. So, I feel that we, we've established great trust, and I think we have great trust with, with the owners as well, that they could help lean on any issues that we run into. But thank you for being in compliance for the first year and all your hard work, and welcome to Mishawaka, and I'll be in favor of renewing this this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mamalenti. Before I go to you, Mr. Emmons, the thought occurs to me that Mr. and Mrs. DeKirk at one point, DeTurk, I'm sorry, at one point wanted to invite the individual who actually operates this facility to the podium, and whether he's changed his mind, he doesn't want to come up, I have some questions myself that I'd like to ask him. So, sir, if you could come forward and begin by stating your name and address for the record?
Hello, my name is Jesus Navarro. I live in 1622 South Jackson Street, South Bend, Indiana.
Okay. To echo Mr. Mamalenti's comments before I ask a couple of questions, and then the comments made in the staff report, we appreciate the fact that you have lived up to the commitments that you've made to us around a year ago when you were at that podium. So, thank you for that. Hopefully, your business is thriving, and, and the future is bright for you. The one note of concern I have is the issue that Mr. Benicki raised with regard to the tires. And I guess it's concerning to me that, based on what Mr., what's in the staff report and what Mr. Prince just recited, that there was a conversation on-site at your facility, correct? Between the city staff and yourself with regard to the tires. And it could just be misunderstanding, but I want to make sure, what can you tell me to alleviate my concern that you didn't ignore what the staff told you about the placement of the tires, and that we're not going to have any kind of safety issue with those tires and rims being, how was too close to the street?
Well, at first, I thought it just because it was right by when you entered.
Okay.
So, I thought maybe that was the issue with them, so I figured, maybe put them under the sign. I mean, no cars go through there, so, you know, I figured it was an issue. But if it's, if still an issue, I put them by the door, or by the, by the building. No problem.
Thank you. That makes me feel much better. I appreciate that. The other issue that came up last year, and then is also referenced in the staff report, is an expansion of your business model to include oil changes or any type of automotive work that would then result in fluids being drained from the vehicles, what have you. What are your thoughts on whether that type of expansion of the business is imminent? And if so, do you remain committed to the condition that was built into the resolution that was approved and the resolution that's in front of us tonight, which would obligate you to put in one of those separator systems if you're going to expand the business into the other areas?
Yeah. As far as right now, I don't, I don't see myself expanding towards that, but if I do, I, I, you know, I would gladly put that in, but I don't see myself anytime soon doing any mechanical work there.
And if memory serves from our conversation last year, you had never intended to do that.
The sale of the tires and the service of the, of the tires themselves was really the reason why you opened up your shop in that occasion, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, that was just in case, you know, get more, how do you say it, more money, but it is not necessary. I'm okay with just selling wheels and tires.
All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate the answers to my questions. Any other questions for this gentleman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And with that, we are once again at the point where the floor is open for council members to speak. Mr. Emmons?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask an amendment to our 20-21-18 to change the renewal to a five-year period instead of just indefinite. I know we talked to the, to the presenters, and that, and they're willing to go for a five-year extension and that, and renewal for every five years. And I think from past experiences, what we run into, I think this is a good way to go. I know they've been a very good tenant, and I have nothing against them, but I think we need some kind of protection down the line and that. So, I'm in favor of the renewal, but for a five-year period. I'll make that motion, please.
Okay. Is there a second? Is there a second to Mr. Emmons' motion? Hearing none, then the motion dies for lack of a second. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Let me just echo Mr. Compton and Mr. Mamalenti's comments. I appreciate the, the commitment to following through on what we were told last year, that's, that's been evidenced here. So, I also will be voting in favor of it. And that's not to say that I disagree totally with Mr. Emmons' sentiment here. He makes some valid points, and we always are concerned when people come before us and make representations that they're going to own up to them. But here we have the track record of the past year, which you have done exactly what you told us, and that's important to me. The other thing that I think is relevant to the motion that Mr. Emmons made a couple minutes ago is that what we're doing here builds upon state law, and this is the process that's in place throughout the state of Indiana. Perhaps Indiana General Assembly ought to think about changing it so that there's a different type of oversight. But until that happens, we're following here locally what, what the General Assembly has put in place with regard to these type of matters. The other thing that comes to mind is that, as concerned as I am about some of the problem areas that we've had, I think it's safe to say that overwhelmingly so, over an extended period of time, at least the entire time that I've been on the council, petitioners who have come to us have kept their word. They have lived up to it. And granted, there have been some really concerning situations where people didn't do that, but I think overwhelmingly so, people keep their word to us. One of the things that Mr. Triple and probably Mr. Hinkle and I all learned in law school is a saying, hard cases make bad law. And my fear is that if we overreact to a prior, an unrelated bad issue, that we then would set in stone a precedent where everybody who came for, forward, not just this individual, but everybody else, we'd have to hold them through the same standard. And we had a little bit of a glitch the other night with these folks showing up. My fear is that it would be difficult for us to police a five-year cycle. So, I appreciate your sentiment, and I agree with you with what underlies it, but I also will be voting in favor of this, this evening for that reason. And if there are no, Mr. Emmons?
Yeah. You know, I agree with what you're saying, but in my district, I've had a number of variances, and people aren't abiding by it. We have one that we give a variance through on the corner of West and Sixth, and Seventh Street. They have not complied one bit. And, you know, as a representative of that area, it's disturbing to me that we give these variances, and then there's no teeth in it
Oh, sure.
To make these people abide by what they say they're going to do. And that's why I'm asking, or I did ask, for a five-year stipulation, so that we have some kind of teeth to back up of what they're saying they're going to do. And it, and I've got about four other ones in our, my district that we've given a variance to, and they haven't lived up to it. We have another one on Sixth Street and that. And like I say, it's disturbing to me as a representative of that area that we can do nothing to keep those people, to keep their property up, and to do what they said they were going to do when they asked for the variance.
And I share that concern.
As someone who also represents the people
Yeah.
In, in that location, I also am concerned. And it's for that reason why I think it's important for this council to work with our administration to, within the parameters that are established by the law, to be very diligent about following up on these commitments, and to hold people to the commitments that they make. And if they do, if they fall short, then perhaps we need to expedite the process as is allowed under the law, and I'm not in favor of ending up in court, even as a lawyer with everybody, but I think that in certain circumstances, certain situations have been allowed to linger too long, and we need to strike that balance between allowing it to linger and not overreacting to it. So, I think that we need to continue to work together, council and administration, to take these matters seriously, but I appreciate your diligence to the issues and the passion that you bring to the table on behalf of your constituents. Thank you, Mr. President. So, with that, if there are no other questions or comments from the council, I will call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
No.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes 8-1.
Ordinance is on second reading.
Proposed ordinance number 2021-22, an ordinance annexing contiguous territory to the city of Mishawaka, Indiana, and providing zoning classification therefor. This is annexation and zoning of 19.02 acres to R1 for a proposed single-family residential subdivision, Autumn Ridge, Phase 4. This is a vote only.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the common council of the city of Mishawaka, your committee in land
your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance twenty-two-one dash twenty-two, report that they have examined said matter and in their opinion should be presented to the council as a whole. This is signed by the entire committee and I move for its acceptance.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to, uh, receive the committee report. Any further questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, then Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council on the committee report?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Committee report passes nine to zero.
Thank you. With that, um, consistent with the requirements of state law, we held a public hearing on this matter at our prior council meeting. So now we are at the stage where a vote is in order and, um, in conjunction with the law. Prior to that, are there any further questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes nine to zero.
Proposed ordinance number twenty-two-one dash twenty-three and ordinance, ordinance annexing contiguous territory to the city of Mishawaka, Indiana and providing zoning classification therefore. This is annexation and zoning of five point two-four acres to I-148 proposed self-storage facility at one-six-nine-nine-six, State Road twenty-three. This is a vote only.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the common council of the city of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number twenty-two-one dash twenty-three, report that they have examined said matter and that in their opinion should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee and I move for its acceptance.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to receive the committee report. Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, then Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council on the committee report?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yep.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Committee report passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Once again, consistent with the requirements of state law, we held a public hearing on this proposed ordinance at our last council meeting. So at this time, this matter is ripe for a vote absent any questions or comments from the council. Hearing none, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes nine to zero.
Thank you. We will now move into privilege of the floor. At this time, members of the public are invited to the podium to speak regarding non-agenda items only under privilege of the floor. Please come forward, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Sherri Raven and I live at one-twenty-two West Sixth Street in Mishawaka. And I'm here to discuss some problems that we are having in our neighborhood. Mr. DeMaye and Mr. Emmons both know what's going on. I have folders for everybody.
How many folders do you have?
I have, well, I have twelve here, but I have three more.
Okay, I only need one and then you can go ahead and give them to the council. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Sherri.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Let's leave one, ma'am. Ma'am, I'll leave one for Mike, too. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll take the one for Mike.
I've got it, Debbie. I'll bring it to you.
I'll just have to come over there and pick it up.
As our councilwoman, Maggie DeMaye, and our councilman, Woody Emmons, knows, we've had some problems with our neighbor at one-nineteen West Sixth Street. And we've had to call the police many, many times. And Vic from Code Enforcement has worked with us and has issued many, many citations to Mr. Michael Peck. And, uh, so just briefly, you'll have inside your folders is just a brief what's been going on. And, um, so I'm gonna say, uh, we're here regarding the, one of our neighboring houses at one-nineteen West Sixth Street. Its occupant is Michael Peck. He is known by Code Enforcement quite well and they've tried to relentlessly to get Mike to take care of the property. And Mike and his mother's names are on the property. That's Shelby Peck. There has been no utilities at one-nineteen West Sixth Street since October of 2020. He has disregarded many notices from Code Enforcement, has lost custody of his three underage children. Um, his wife left and is living elsewhere, but has also lost custody, has had many people that we now know have, uh, prior, um, convictions or have been arrested for, um, drugs and many different things, theft and that. So he's, has a lot of people going in and out and they've been known to jump the fences, cross the neighbor's property. And, um, this is happening at one, two, three, four o'clock in the morning, disturbing the neighborhood. Mike had a fire on June fifteenth of his garage, which damaged my neighbor's properties and, um, some of the other ones that weren't able to hear, be here. Burnt his garage, burnt the back of his house, damaged one, two, three houses on the east side and two properties on the west side. I mean, sorry, two properties on the east and three properties in the west. And he has no insurance. And we found out that he's not had insurance since 2019. He, we just don't know what we can do, what the council can do to help us. We don't know. Code Enforcement has told them that he can only be there during the day to fix things, but he's not fixing anything. He's having people coming in. When the police come at night after he's supposed to be gone, he, he or the people hide in the house and they're not, without probable cause, are not allowed to go into the house and get them to leave. And if they do leave, usually it's like an hour or two after the police are there, they leave. They come back three, four o'clock in the morning and they start all over again of people going in and out, cars going up and down. And it's just a disturbance to the neighborhood. Um, the garage itself has not been taken down. It's been boarded up by the city so that it wouldn't fall, but it's dangerous for children in the neighborhood or people walking. And we just kinda wanna know a timeline of what's going on and what can be done and probably not be able to answer these questions tonight, but we sure would like to have some answers. So that's suggested. I don't know if anybody else has anything to say?
Why don't we see if, if anyone has any questions for, uh, petitioner number one, and then we'll move down the line, but absolutely won't bite you up to the podium. Any questions? Mr. Mamalanti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mrs. Raven, for your, uh, extremely detailed, um, presentation that you've given to us. You made one comment and I just want you to confirm it. You'd mentioned that they have not had any homeowner's insurance since 2019?
I have found out today that there's been no homeowner's insurance since 2019.
Do you know if there's a mortgage on the home?
No. Um, he, his mother that lives right next to us purchased the house for he and his family to live into and they were supposed to pay her back through like a land contract. And he has not paid anything since then. He had a fire prior to that, right not too long after they moved in. They had insurance then. It paid off a few of their bills and they were, they started to do renovation and then just stopped. The, the inside of the house has not been finished. The outside was, but it's not been finished on the inside. And, um, he's not carried any kind of insurance or paid anything towards the land contract since then. So I believe that land contract is null and void, but I'm not positive about that.
And then the pictures that you have, um, given to, um, Mr. Hicksonbaugh and myself with the gentleman or?
Yeah, there's somebody pulled up, I don't know what his name is, but he pulled up and he unloaded a mattress and took it up and put it against Michael's house. And there's not supposed to be anybody living there at night, but, um, Vic has been coming by from Code Enforcement and they've been getting letters and stuff, but yes.
Was that mattress brought inside?
No, it's still leaning on the outside of the porch.
Okay. And then the other pictures that were included in our folder, when were those taken?
Most of them, if it was the fire, they were, um, right after June fifteenth, within a week or two.
It's, the ones I'm referencing are the ones with all the debris?
Refuge, lots of.
That's the refuge, but those were taken a week ago, two weeks ago, when he started a fire again in his backyard, trying to burn the refuge that he had not cleaned up.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Ramel, but if I drove over there tomorrow, and I will, does this property have this appearance still?
As far as I know, yes. Yes. They live right next door to it.
That's all I have, Mr. President, for, uh, Mrs. Raven. So I appreciate it.
Before I go to Mrs. Volker, one of the things I would suggest, if you have an extra packet with you, um, Mr. Henkel, if you'd be kind enough to wave a little bit, Mr. Henkel is our corporation counsel. It might be helpful if you left one of those packets with Mr. Henkel so that he can look at it. Much of this information may already be known to him, but it wouldn't hurt to have him, uh, take a look at that packet as well.
Thank you.
Mrs. Volker?
I just had a question. Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a question about the, um, the visitor.
I think that is Melissa?
Yes.
Okay. She, um, what is your question?
Well, why is it in here? What does this?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Those are one of the people that come all the time and she has, uh, been priorly convicted. And so she's one of the people that go in and out of the house all the time and she's had.
Okay. So it's just that she is a known?
Yeah, she's just one of the, one of the people that we knew their names.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Folks, my.
I wanted to add some context of why that was in here.
Absolutely. I appreciate that clarifying question, but my suggestion's gonna be, let's focus on the condition of the property, the individuals. I don't know that this is the appropriate setting to bring up any particular individuals, but you can certainly have some conversations with Mr. Henkel and others about those type of issues and I understand where you're coming from.
Okay, thank you.
Any other que, Mrs. DeMaye?
Thank you. Can you tell us about the property taxes? Are the, is the house?
As far as I know, the house was going to be going to the tax cell, um, but his mother paid enough to keep it off the tax cell for this year. Paid a portion of it to keep it off the tax cell.
Mr. Hazen?
Do you know where the process is at with Code Enforcement?
Well, uh, last we spoke to Vic, um, he keeps on, I mean, he, he's told them what they can do, what they can't do. Mike got a permit to work on some of the stuff himself. There's been no work, but regardless, he's got a permit, but he's only supposed to do that during the day. And that's, it's electrical and it needs to be inspected by our city electricians. And that was two weeks ago and as of this date, he's, as far as I know, there's been no process because I hear no hammering or not seeing any material or tools or anything go in. Not that I sit by my window all day, but you never know. I've sat there all night.
Yeah.
This is definitely a problem, but I will tell you, sometimes Code Enforcement, it takes a while to go through the courts.
It does. Well, he, he passed it on, um, to the city inspectors and they went in and inspected. Um, he needs to do electrical, some plumbing. There is a foundation that needs to be fixed. Um, of course, the garage needs to be torn down and everything needs to be cleared out. And none of that has been done.
And they should've gave him a timeframe so you know that.
He was supposed to have the backyard cleaned up this morning by eight o'clock and it has not been.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Ma'am, you mentioned that there's activity over there at night. Do they actually have the electricity turned on in the home or what are they, what are, are they using Coleman lanterns or how, how are they getting?
We believe that they're using their cell phones, their flashlights and that. They did have a battery la, lighter, light in there. Uh, we had heard a while back that they had somehow rigged into the electric through the city and that was found out and that got pulled and taken care of. And they had rigged into the water of the city and that had been found and that's been taken care of because they're not paying for anything. So they finally got locks on those items.
Thank you.
Mr. Emmons?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanna thank you and your neighbors for coming tonight, even though I had to talk with, with your neighbors and your husband and that about a week ago pertaining to this situation. I will say one thing, it is a disgrace to have something like that in a neighborhood. I mean, to drive by and see three or four homes damaged, charcoed, a garage burned almost to the ground, stuff littered throughout the backyard and been there almost a month, if not longer, and nothing's been done. I know that there's guidelines from code to planning to the police department, to the building department, but we need to put stronger teeth in to where we can make it a shorter period of time to get things cleaned up. Because it is a disgrace for not only you, the neighbor, but everybody else in the city to drive by and see that and let it be there for the period it has been there. And that. And like I say, I honestly can't represent why we allow this to go on for so long. I know there's a period of time that they have to go through. I talked with Mr. Van Nevo this evening. He was supposed to be here, but he had a emergency that he had to go to and that. And he was saying that the property now has been listed as a nuisance with the police department.
Yes.
And now I don't know exactly what that entails or what they can do since it's been identified as a nuisance and that, whether the time period is shortened, whether they can get it cleaned up, or what they can do to Mr. Peck or his mother to get the property back to where it's supposed to be.
I'm not sure what they can do either. I do know that one of the officers said that they feel like their hands are tied by the city of not being able to let them go in without, you know, even, even though we see somebody go in there and they're hiding, we know they're in there, they're not able to go in. So they feel like their, their hands are tied. And so they, all they can do is give us suggestions. We've put up no, no trespassing signs, which we didn't wanna do, um, you know.
Well, I, I would think that since he's pulled a permit for electrical work, that the building department should be able to go in and look and see what's being done and what's going on in there. I would, I would surmise that.
Well, that's what's supposed to happen, but we don't know what the timeline is for that.
That I don't either. And again, I don't know all these timelines of what, what they can have. I know code sends out, uh, letters and that for a thirty-day period and that and give them time. But I don't know, like, the building department, once they issue a permit, how long it takes them before they can go in and survey what's been done or what hasn't been done, or if it's up to code.
Okay.
And that. But I will say one thing, I will say on this, talking with the code, different departments, whatever it takes to get this situation remedied.
I appreciate that.
And hopefully we can get it done quicker than later.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I'm sure my fellow councilmen would have the same feelings that this shouldn't be going on for the longest, for the time period it has gone on for.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you so very much.
And I want to express, too, if you have ever, any other concerns, you have my phone number, please don't ever hesitate not to call me.
Okay.
Please.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Mrs. DeMaye?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, when I was over at your house, speaking with you and your husband, he, Mr. Peck, had a gas-powered generator in the house. You could smell the gas that he was pouring into the generator and he brought it into the house and that's how he fired up his electricity. Is he still using that gas-powered generator?
No, no. Um, I don't know if it's still in the house, but he somehow disabled it. It's, it's not working anymore. So I don't know if it's still in the house, but he's never, he's never been able to get it to run after that day you were there.
Okay.
So at least we don't have to worry about him being a fixator.
Let's add a question for Mr. Emmons. Did you? Mr. Emmons, did you get a timeframe from code when it can at least be cleaned up?
They're working on it. We don't have a definite timeframe, other than that they have sent letters and that to Mr. Peck and stating that he's in violation of the code and that they had a timeline of fixing, uh, of removing all this debris, which they haven't done. And that. So I don't know what's gonna be done since they missed it, the timeline and that. So all I know is Mr. Kasni is working on, on the case. Van Nevo, Mr. Van Nevo is involved in the case and that, but nobody can give an exact time period of when this situation is gonna be taken care of. And I don't blame code. I don't blame building department. I don't blame the police. It's just that we don't have enough teeth in it to bring this thing to a closure quick enough.
I agree with that. No one should have to live next to this.
Yeah.
Thank you. Other questions and comments for Mrs. Raven? Ma'am, thank you for the information that you shared with us. I'm sorry that you had to share it with us, but.
We're sorry, too. We're more concerned about, well, we're concerned about everything, but we're concerned about the people going in and out and we're pretty sure they're doing some kind of drug transfor, you know, transporting.
Well, and, and just so you know, uh, Mrs. DeMaye and I had a conversation, I wanna say last week. Now this brings it full circle. You know, picture says a thousand words, as they say, and this really helps me better understand. I think Mr. Emmons used the perfect word. Um, this is disgusting.
Yes.
It's disheartening and it's not what I expect to see in Mishawaka. I think we all agree with that up here. Um, there are certain circumstances that are beyond our control. I differentiate somebody who suffers a casualty loss in a tragedy like a fire from this. That, that appears to me to be an issue of a different stripe. And we have really diligent people working in all the departments that have been referenced here. people working in all the departments that have been referenced here, but I'm hurt plus, one place where I'll part company with Mr. Emmons is, I'm not one hundred percent convinced that there isn't an ability under the law and ordinances to deal with this differently, and I refuse to believe that we don't have any teeth and any ability to be able to enforce and enact reasonable standards with regard to these type of properties. So I appreciate the work that everybody does, but my hope would be that this now will bring a different sense of urgency to this matter, and my hope that would be through the auspices of perhaps Mr. Henkel or Mr. Prince, that not just Mr. Emmons and Mrs. DeMay, but the entire council would receive an update with regard to where we're at on the follow-up to this concern, what the timeline is, and what additional steps are gonna be taken to address this, because this is not only a problem, although it's first and foremost a problem for you and your neighborhood, this is a problem for everybody who lives in Mishawaka, if too many situations, even this one situation, are allowed to linger. So thank you for bringing it to our attention, please continue to share with my two colleagues and the rest of us, any information that you want us to receive, and we will do what we can to try to help you, although it'll need to be a partnership between council and administration, since the vast majority of these issues fall within the operation of the administration to address, but I'm confident that they will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. Emmons.
Yes, these pictures and that doesn't represent what we call, and we like to promote the best hometown city.
No, it doesn't.
And that, it does not represent, your property across the street does not represent what Mishawaka is and what we want it to be, and I'm sorry you have to put up with it.
Well, I'm more sorry for my neighbors that live right next door to it.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
And I will add this, I appreciate those comments, but twenty million dollar investments in the inner city are gonna be watered down, and the value to the community will be watered down if our residential neighborhoods continue to have to grapple with issues like this. So I'm confident that we can walk and chew gum at the same time, and while we're doing development downtown, we can address these issues as well, but thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor? Thank you for your patience, sir. If you could begin, if you could begin by stating your name and address.
Kevin Walton, I live at one, two, three, West Sixth Street, I'm literally the neighbor of Michael Peck, my wife and I moved into our house about fifteen months ago, noticed some questionable activity, to use a general term, shortly after that, the fire on June fifteenth happened, now that questionable activity is now transitioning into the house that's been condemned since October of, was it last year?
December.
December. Okay. My concern is twofold, first, I have a nine-year-old daughter that can't let her go out and play in my backyard, because I have a burned-down garage and a structural issue that I have to be concerned about. Second of all, I've got a twenty-one-year-old stepdaughter that have all this criminal activity walking by my house, I do mean literally within feet of my house at all hours of the night, two, three, four o'clock in the morning. Just early Sunday morning, two guys jumped the fence, and literally we're in footsteps of, of my house. When we say we called the cops, ladies and gentlemen, I do mean we called the cops at least twenty times last month, they all come out and they all basically tell us the same thing, there's not much they can do, that the permit that's posted on his residence says that he has a right to be in his residence, per the building commissioner, to do work, however, just this Sunday alone, he was brought out of his house by gunpoint by the police and detained for a little while, but it was at five fifteen in the morning, and he was saying he was doing work on his house, no electricity in the house, mind you, cannot see in his house, but doing work on his house. He has this criminal element that has been convicted multiple counts that are in this house, we have people literally walking to his house that are, you know, just walking in, average, you know, person, walking out with backpacks. We've called the cops multiple times, they all searched, at this point in time, they have not found a single thing, however, obviously there's something more going on that we cannot figure out. What I'm asking you, refrains, I'm pleading, pleading to you, is use your force that you have on the building commissioner or, or whatever departments it might fall on, the cops are all asking us for the same thing, they need clarity on this permit on his house, they need to know exactly what days he can be in his residence, what days, or what time he needs to be out of his residence, because according to the information we were all been given, he's only there supposed to be doing work on his residence, that was it, not supposed to live there, reside there, have company there, just be there for his own particular maintaining of his property. And if that was the case, the neighborhood that's been affected would be okay with this gentleman, but the fact is that there's more to this that are constantly going on. We've literally pleaded with police officers to do drive-bys of our house between two and five o'clock, and I guarantee you, every time that they do, they will see somebody suspicious walking by this residence. It literally, and this is, I don't mean to raise false alarms, but it literally got to a point, on an early Sunday morning, I was gonna take my own personal firearm, go outside and confront somebody, because this is getting clearly out of hand. Thank God I had the clear of mind not to do so, so I'm not condoning that activity at all, but it's literally becoming a threat to my personal property and to my family, and not to mention that there's one resident, so let me make this in full clarification, and I apologize for rambling, but this needs to be said, so the, the fire at Michael Peck's residence affected five additional families, okay, five additional, not including him. He doesn't have insurance, we're all on the hook for our own deductibles, okay? There is my next-door neighbor who just lost her husband approximately two and a half months ago, shortly before the fire, and then now, she's been displaced at her own home, because the fire caught the back of her residence on fire, and the electrical box that attaches to her residence got fried, I mean, it's completely dismantled, so they have to do the repair first, and then hook up the electricity second, so she's been getting help with Red Cross, and staying in, in hotels, and being completely, her life's changed, based upon this incident. I was just lucky to just have some siding damage to my house, I was, I was, you know, but the grace of God, but you see the impact that this particular situation has on multiple people around him, and all I'm asking is, whatever influence you have, use it to the proper department, so we can get clarification. All the officers want, when they come out, is to look at this notice and say, if it's Monday through Friday, from eight to six, he's fine in there, but if it's after those times, then they have the literally, literally, sorry, the authority to go and do something about it. Otherwise, they knock on the door, they don't answer, they are afraid to even enforce whatever penalties that they can. We had one of his people, one of his friends, stay at her, at his house early Sunday morning, and she, earlier in that day, she was brought by the cops, evicted from the property, she was removed from the property twice, this is the third incident. She was literally taken to the jail, charged with criminal trespass, and I know, I know this doesn't fall in your jurisdiction, but district, district, jurisdiction, excuse me, but the prosecutor dismissed the charges, so right now, there's no recourse to them to do anything, it's a free-for-all, it's a place where they can come and crash, do whatever activity they want to do, and we're all stuck right in the middle of it. And like I said, I've got two children and a wife that, you know, that's my, that's my life, and I can't have this criminal element floating around, or this house that's the center of it all, being the hub of it all. So anyway, thank you for your time, I apologize for rambling so long.
No, nothing to apologize for, yeah, I'm confident I speak for everyone up here, that we're sorry that you are experiencing this, and that you have to take the step to come here, we're always happy when people come to visit us, but typically, we like it when it's for a reason other than what you're experiencing, and that goes to all of your neighbors, and everybody who's impacted by this. There are certain things that I think we'd all agree, that the law is not gonna allow us to do, even if we want to do. There are property rights that every individual has and enjoys with regard to their property, and as a side, we have to strike that balance between what somebody does with their property, and what they visit on their neighbors, and the turmoil, and the problems, and the strife that they cause for others, and it's a delicate balance, but I'll restate what I said before, I refuse to believe that there isn't something that can't be done, and that is not an indication that I believe that nothing is being done, because I am, it's always been my experience that all of our city departments take this seriously, police department, code enforcement, building, et cetera, et cetera. But my hope would be that based upon this dialogue tonight, that again, there'll be that different sense of urgency, and that you'll be able to see some positives, it's not gonna be an overnight fix, it's not a problem that developed overnight, right, it's gonna take some time to address it, but I believe as a community that we have the wherewithal to be able to address these situations, and I remain more optimistic than not, more often than not, that we can address these type of situations, so thank you for bringing it to our attention, and I would be shocked, I can promise you, this is not an issue that's gonna recede from the collective memory of the council as soon as the meeting is over tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Ramelie, I'm sorry, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Walton, for, for coming and having the courage to come and, and speak on your behalf, along with the, the neighbors, and all's I can do is say, I'm sorry, it's, you're, every homeowner's nightmare come true, you purchased a home fifteen months ago, and this is what you're running into, and I have a difficult time even now, looking at your wife shedding tears of, of everything, sadness, anxiety, et cetera, so I just want to echo Mr. Hickson Ball's point, that this, I think this issue has, safe to say, has been moved to the forefront, and has an extreme sense of urgency to it. I want to thank Mr. Emmons, he brought this to my attention last week, and he had mentioned that you guys were gonna attend and, and speak, so thank you again for doing that, and thank you for Mrs. DeMay's efforts as well, and I think now, it's, it's safe to say that you have, have nine people that are gonna be working on this for you, so thank you.
You're welcome. Mrs. DeMay.
I have a question, not to you, sir, but for anybody here in the council, can, can a, a building permit be revoked?
Sure.
It can, there's a due, due process, I'm sorry, component to that as well, my hope would be that based upon the fact that we're now comprehensively aware of this, that there'll be some conversations that'll take place within the halls of city government as soon as tomorrow, to try to look at any creative solutions that can be brought to the table, but I think that, based upon your question, Mr. Henkel, Corporation Counsel, will take a look at those issues as well.
Great, thank you.
You know, thing I would add real quick, and it'll just be thirty seconds, is, this is literally overtasking the police force, I mean, I do mean, within a month's time, there's been a minimum of twenty calls, so think about all the other efforts that these police officers could be doing, and the safety that they could be providing, and they're getting frustrated, because they don't know what to do when they get there, so it just becomes this never-ending cycle of, of, you know, taking up their resources, having them not do anything, and then the, the cycle repeats itself, so it's just, you know, I think, from a objective standpoint, I just wish something would be done, because these are quality resources that we're all paying for, that could be used in a thousand times different manner than what they're currently being called out for, but as a neighborhood, we have no other choice, but to constantly, constantly call these people, because we don't know what these people's intentions are, you know, literally, one individual on Sunday morning drove off, got in a high-speed pursuit, and crashed his car, and then fled. Another one literally was in the, the neighbor's yard cocking a, a crossbow, you know, basically displaying a weapon to us, letting him know, letting us know that, you know, don't approach him, so not only is it a, a issue where we're wasting, not wasting, but utilizing cities' resources that are not being affected, that are not being managed effectively, but also this situation with these individuals are escalating at the same time. So, last thing I wish on anyone, including myself, is for anybody to get hurt in the process, but unfortunately, that's the direction that we're heading, is coming to a nasty head and a climax, and, you know, I just wish something could be done before then, so, anyway, thank you for your time.
Oh, you're welcome, and we appreciate your sensitivity to the resources that are being developed by, devoted by the police department to this, but, and I'll defer to my colleague, former Chief Hazen, but I have always understood our police department comprehensively to say, do not self-edit, don't feel, when you feel like you need to call, call, they would much rather come out there and be of assistance to you, than to have you not call when you really need their help, am I right with that?
No, you're exactly right, and I would say, I, I think most of us up here understand where you're coming from, but don't do something that ruins your life either, let the police handle it, and we'll get it done, you got nine people, I guarantee you, all nine of us, I'm gonna make a suggestion, somebody takes the point on this and keeps the rest of us informed, but we'll all make phone calls if we have to, and see the department heads, and get something done, because I do think it's a ticking time bomb, I mean, I know if I lived next door, it would be.
Just like I said, these, these individuals are getting more brazen, and more daring, and just more, I, I don't even know how to describe it, unless you actually live with it on a day-in, day-out basis, you know, and the sad thing is, I love Mishawaka, I, I have no problem living in the city, but even if I did sell my, my home right now, I wouldn't get fair market value, because the burned-down barn next to it, and literally, we had to put Ring Doorbell cams all around our house to monitor the residents, so even if somebody did come to my property that was interested, the red flags are already there, so it's like, you know, you're darned if you do, and you're darned if you don't, so what do you do? But anyway, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time, I appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor? Please come forward, ma'am.
Thank you for having us, councilmen and women, I am Sherry Keen, I live at one eleven West Sixth Street, I grew up in the house that I live in, when my mother died, I bought it, did a nice remodel, have a nice home, and, you know, we live, Sherry, the other Sherry, we've lived there for years, we know Michael, we know Shelby, if it was a situation where he just needed help, we would help, you know, we're not, we're not cruel, mean people, but we got to a point where, and it's not been just since June, you know, it's been like almost a year dealing with this, it just keeps, like he said, keeps getting worse and worse, and we just need help, we, I don't live right next to him, I would be scared to death every night going to bed, not knowing if I'm gonna wake up to a fire. I was lucky enough where it just damaged my siding, you know, I, like the lady on the corner, we almost didn't get her out and die, she didn't hear it, they had another fire the same night, so the firemen didn't get there until later, so, I mean, somebody could've died, and we're just trying to avoid that, we're trying to live good in our neighborhood, we're trying to be good neighbors, take care of our property, and I'm sure, like you, like somebody said, you wouldn't want to live next to it, it damages our property, property value, so if we wanted to move, we really wouldn't get anything for it now, just want to have, have somebody help us, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council?
Thank you, ma'am.
Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor? Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor? Thank you. I'm not aware of any unfinished business, so we'll move into new business, is there any new business to come before the council? Mr. Ramelie?
Thank you, Mr. President, we would just like to put out a reminder regarding the National Night Out events that will be occurring at Twin Branch Park in the pavilion, there'll be some food, some beverages, prizes, games, et cetera, as they, as they normally do each year, and that is August third, correct, Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
And the time is five thirty? I believe five or five thirty, so all are welcome to come by Twin Branch Park Pavilion, August third.
Thank you. Any, is there any other new business to come before the council? If not, then a motion to adjourn is in order. We are adjourned, thank you.